Call me in order, oh please rise. I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, we take the roll.
Alderman Vasso.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kamarski.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, Treasurer, and Attorney General.
All right. First, tonight we have some press presentations. I am fortunate to, uh, we have a, every year, we have, the last couple of years, we run a tree decorating contest over behind the fire department. And we put trees there and various organizations take their time and effort to go out and decorate the trees. And, uh, we have three winners that are with us tonight. So as I read you off, if you come up, if you are represented here, if you please come up and pick up your certificates. Third place went to the litter, Little Learners preschool. Anybody here from Little Learners?
Little Learners preschool.
Nope, okay. Second place, Brownie Troop 554-58. Anybody here from there?
Yes.
There you go. All right. Come on, there you go. Here's your certificate. Okay, girls, congratulations. Get there too, get your certificate too, okay? Good job, okay? Thanks, guys. And first place goes to Gross South Troops, two troops, 51-604-552-43. Okay, there you go, girls. Great job. Thank you. Thank you to everyone for takes. We get about fifteen or twenty different organizations that do this, so it's a great thing for the kids to get involved. So under consent calendar, I've got a couple of things. The approval of the minutes of the city council meeting November 5th, 2019, the city council meeting November 19th, 2019, and also the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending November 29th, 2019. Entertained a motion to approve the consent calendar. Move by Alderman Kamarski, second by Alderman Violet, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
All right, so, okay, we're entering the Christmas season, so we've got a lot of things going on in town. Last week, last Friday night, we had the tree lighting ceremony over at Lake Catherine, great crowd, little cool night, but, uh, had a great bunch of families that are out there. It's what it's all about, getting the families out to enjoy it. Uh, I had my, a couple of my grandkids out there, saw Santa Claus, they had reindeer, hot chocolate and the likes, so it was a great time. And then you notice that the Harlem Avenue, uh, lights are up. I just, one comment, I had a, an individual friend of mine, Joe McKeever, he's doing McKeever Volkswagen here on, uh, Southwest Highway, Southwest Highway, and he's in Rotary with me, and made a point of calling me today and saying he was out last Sunday here in town having dinner, celebrating Norm Swidmore, he's doing Horel Jeweler, his ninetieth birthday over at the Highlander House, and, uh, just wanted to comment on how nice the lights were on Harlem Avenue and what a nice touch it was. So, uh, so you may not think that people will actually like it, enjoy it, but it does go a long way to, for, you know, the holiday season. Unfortunately, we don't have snow, or fortunately, we don't have snow, one of the two, depending which way you look at it, but, uh, so we're in the season. Also, you know, keep your, as far as driving, you know, we will have people through town over the weekend and next couple of weeks, so, uh, watch out how you drive through town. So enough said for me. City clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items on the agenda regarding the schedule for next year. First, we need a motion to pass a resolution setting the schedule for the city council meetings for 2020.
Someone make that motion, please. Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman, uh, McGovern, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Second, we need a motion to pass a resolution setting the schedule for the committee meetings for 2020.
Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman McGovern, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Send a mayor report.
All right, city treasurer?
Thank you, no report.
Uh, city attorney?
No report.
Any communication?
Mr. Mayor, something I'd like to read.
Sure.
Pearl Harbor, a U.S. naval base near Honolulu, Hawaii, was the scene of a devastating surprise attack by Japanese forces on December 7th, 1941. Just before 8:00 a.m. on that Sunday morning, hundreds of Japanese fighter planes descended on the base where they managed to destroy or damage nearly twenty American naval vessels and over three hundred aircraft. More than twenty-four hundred Americans died in the attack, including civilians, and another thousand people were wounded. President Franklin Delano Roosevelt proclaimed December 7th, 1941, a date which will live in infamy, and war in Japan was declared the next day. So parents, grandparents, please remind the children that this was a very devastating historical event. Thank you.
Any other communication? Alderman Clifford?
Uh, yeah, um, just announcement that Saturday we unloaded our trees, and thank you for the high school, kids from Stag High School that helped us save our backs up there that day. We unloaded about seven hundred trees. The tree lat will be open on weekdays from noon to eight o'clock at night, and on weekends from nine in the morning to six p.m. Uh, we're loc, they'll be located at just north by Midwest Bank by Nick's, uh, Old Nick's barbecue there. Uh, all of, uh, we have wreaths and trees and, uh, and such and everything, all the proceeds of that go to help families in need during that Christmas, and our annual, what we call our Christmas food basket drive. Any high school kids that are willing to come up and help, any community hours, you can see me or stop by the, I'll be there tomorrow from five to eight. Uh, you can stop by or stop by, see any of the lions there, tell them you're willing to work and they'll take care of you if you, if you need to be or if you feel like doing that. And we'll greatly appreciate any help we can get. We're getting older, so, but anyway. And, uh, thing about Pearl Harbor, thank you for mentioning that, it's a part of history, it's a part of our Lord, it's a part of our country, and I'm sort of close to that. My, my wife's father was there that day.
Yeah.
On December 7th, 1941, the day of limited infamy. He was there, I have a picture of him at home, sitting on a deck one of the docks there with three of his friends, ended up working with most of his life after that naval thing. But it's a good history lesson for all the kids out there to keep that in mind along with our veteran Memorial Day. Thank you.
Any other questions? Citizens wishing to address the council, anyone? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jeff Clohesi, 204 Feldner Court, um, the Villa's of Palis Heights right over here. I'm also a board member with them. Um, in January, we received, our, our, um, management company emailed Alderman Key requesting if they were gonna do anything with the property, the old Feldner property. And we received an email back the same day that said, um, where's it at here? Thanks for your note, the only plans are now is to knock down the existing structures on the property. I know the city will include the HOA in any future development as to avoid issues that was mentioned. Um, lo and behold, yesterday, an ice rink goes up there, um, we feel it's gonna have an impact to our road, which is our private road, Feldner Court. Today, they put in jersey barriers to block, you know, the, uh, what would have been the drive going into the old Feldner property. They look terrible. Um, we'd like to sit with somebody and discuss the future of what's gonna happen there.
Sure.
Um, we thought, you know, it's happened so fast, the board feels misled. We did receive, uh, an email back from Alderman Key, or Key, and from the director of the public or, uh, not public works, the Parks Department, and said, sorry, they didn't let us know, but this has been going on for a while, you just don't plop an ice rink down. We understand it's temporary, but there's no fence, there's nothing, and people are gonna cut across, you know, our property and stuff like that, so where do we go from here?
We'll have someone get holy from the, uh, city administrator, get holy and stop something.
Okay.
So apologize for that. It was kind of a thing, just to try to see if it works or not.
It's great to have an ice rink and stuff like that, and, you know, I mean, we love everything that's happening around town, but at the same point in time, you know, people are just gonna keep cutting across and cutting across our property and stuff like that.
We'll keep your guys in mind when we do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So will somebody get back to us within the next, you know?
Give me, before you, just give me your name and phone number again.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
You've got a number.
I already talked to Matt today about it. One of the problems is that it wasn't supposed to go in now, but the, the company is, all of a sudden, had a lot of, um, builds up, and they're trying to do this stuff before the cold weather hits. And this is, nothing has been, nothing has been decided by this council or even the, the rec department on a permanent use for that property.
Right.
But we do get requests on a regular basis for things like dog parks or ice skating rinks and stuff like that. And since we control that property and, so we thought we would use it this year, it's, it's only gonna be up for a short time. I, I think Matt's gonna talk to your management company, which is Erickson Management, I know those people as well, and discuss that there's a whole, there's a whole set of rules that people have to, there's no one gonna be allowed into their, through the Feldner property, onto that, that property. They, they have to come from the recreation side. There's certain hours.
Right.
There's not gonna be, um, you know, team sports, it's not gonna be a hockey rink, you know, that kind of thing. So, um, so Matt is aware of it, and any, any discuss, you know, I'm sure Matt would sit down with you, I would sit down with you and discuss any permanent things, but no, nothing's happening permanently there.
Right, I mean, we would just like to say, okay, we're gonna do this, you know?
Absolutely.
It's right up to our property.
Yeah.
And cars are gonna be coming in, and we pay for maintenance on our road, you know, we're getting ready to spend, you know, quite a bit of money every day doing this like on our road.
Again, it's
Absolutely. It's our bad on us.
And it's not a permanent, we just, you know, the idea was, people have been asking for ice rinks, it's a natural thing next to the center, so.
It's great, but
Understand.
It's separated.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Any other citizens? All right, standing committees, Alderman McGrogan?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, number nine on the agenda, but before I read that, I just want to mention that prior to the meeting this evening, uh, everybody here at the, uh, that's sitting here, voted to recommend the tax levy for 2019, and therefore I'll read it. So number nine is a motion to adopt ordinance number XX19, providing for the tax levy for the city of Palis Heights for the period beginning January 1st, uh, 2019, ending December 31, 2019, in the amount of nine million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Move by Alderman McGrogan.
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Uh, number ten on the agenda is a motion to pass a resolution proportionally reducing all the levies except city corporate, library corporate, and the police pension.
Second. Move by Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Violet, I mean, McGrogan, second by Alderman Violet, discussion, roll call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
All right. Public safety, Alderman McGovern?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one, one thing I'd really like to bring out to everybody is this is the Christmas season, okay? It's time for everybody to be a little bit beware of little things, okay? If you lose your credit card, if you could try, or somebody comes in and tries, tries to get your credit card information, if you have questions about authenticity of an email or anything along that line from, about, about your credit card, there's only one phone call you make, and that's the phone call on the back of your credit card. If they give you a credit, a, a phone number on an email, don't use it unless it's the same one on here. This is the only card you're gonna call, the only phone number you'll call to verify your information. It just happened to me a couple of weeks ago, I had to go over to Chase Bank to turn around and verify, and I, somebody, somebody tried to scam me on one. So I wanna make sure that everybody is well aware of this one. Now, the other thing is shopping season, you're going out to the mall, okay? You get back in your car, I want you to remember this one wonderful acronym for the Christmas season, elves. A little Christmas elf, enter your car, lock your door, fasten your seatbelt, start your car and leave. It's very simple, keeps you nice and safe. Be sure you lock your, but put, uh, uh, all your stuff in trunks, don't keep it out in the open for other people to turn around and see it. Don't, when, when you go walk into your car, have your keys out in your hand all ready, ready to go. It's also a wonderful season of Christmas shopping for the thieves. If they look out in your car and they see, they, they see you got two thousand dollars worth of stuff in the, in the back of your SUV, they're just gonna look there and wait for you to turn around and open that door, and they're gonna trick you somehow. Ask, one guy will ask you to come over here and help them with this, the other guy will go right in the car and turn around and take everything out once you open that door. So get in that car, lock it, fasten that seatbelt, and start that car and go. All right?
I love locking your cars when they're leaving them in the park because of the scammed emails that are going.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, with the scam emails, but this is the only place you turn around, the only phone number you turn around and take a look at, okay? Don't, oh, and the last thing, don't go in the shopping center with fourteen, with fourteen credit cards in your pocket, okay? If you're gonna go out to, if you're gonna go in a shopping center, take one credit card. You could have twenty, thirty thousand dollars on every one of those credit cards, wide open for twenty-four hours. And then it takes, and then it's gonna take you two years to turn around and figure out from all these credit card numbers how to, how to get your money, get your money back. So that's all I have. This is for Christmas, please have it safe, let's keep it as safe as we possibly can.
Mr. Mayor, on that point, one thing, it's a good recommendation, um, on those credit cards, it's, it's not a bad idea to write all your numbers down and keep it at a safe place at home, so in case you do lose your wallet or, uh, somebody steals something that has all your credit card information in it, you at least have all the numbers and the phone numbers that Alderman McGovern pointed out on the back of the card to call so you can say, my account number's such and such, and I wanna cancel it right away. And it really is a good, uh, plan, uh, we go through this quite a bit, uh, sometimes at, in my day job.
Great. Thank you. Alderman Vasso, municipal grounds of property?
Yes, Mayor, I have several items on the agenda. Item number eleven, motion to approve a payment to train for a boiler replacement unit in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Move by Alderman, uh, Vasso, second by Alderman Kamarski, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Item number twelve, motion to approve the purchase of a John Deere Gator XUV 835M for Lake Catherine in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and nineteen cents from Shorewood Home and Auto through the Sourcewell purchasing contract.
Second. Move by Alderman Vasso, second by Alderman Kamarski, discussion, roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Item thirteen, motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of the existing Lake Catherine John Deere 654 Gator model W-006X4X046260 as a trade-in in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to Shorewood Home and Auto.
Move by Alderman Vasso, second by Alderman Kamarski, roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the disposal of the existing equipment trailer used for the asphalt roller.
Move by Alderman Vasso, second by Alderman Kamarski, roll call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Item fifteen, motion to approve the purchase and installation of replacement exterior doors for the city hall electrical room in the amount of five thousand, twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents by Hobbs Overhead Door Company.
Move by Alderman Vasso, second by Alderman Kamarski, roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Item sixteen, motion to approve the purchase of new tire-changing equipment from Sam's Tech Supply in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Move by Alderman Vasso, second by Alderman Kamarski, discussion, roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Finally, item seventeen, motion to approve the replacement of damaged fencing on College Drive and Seventy-Fifth Avenue in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars by K Brothers Fence Incorporated.
Move by Alderman Vasso, second by Alderman Kamarski, discussion, roll call.
Is that the fence over by the Creek, the cyclone fence over here?
Yes, it's the one that never matched the, uh, nice wrought iron one a little bit east of that.
What was the damaged one that was there before that we were replacing? Do you remember, offhand?
It wasn't damaged before. They had a, they had a cyclone, cyclone fence there instead of an iron fence, a wrought iron fence, and because of a tire accident, uh, we're replacing that with a wrought iron fence to match the
Oh, 'cause it said damaged fencing, so I was wondering where it was, okay.
Roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye. That's the end of my report, except I'd like to thank, uh, Pop's Beef and Hot Dog stand for the tremendous, uh, Christmas display they have, they're trying to get me into the holiday mood. I think they have the brightest, nicest, most complete decorations so far this year, and business, so I appreciate it and thank them for that.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that with the nice weather this week, some other places will start putting some up too, so, yes.
On, on number thirteen, on that model number, is that the hyperspace model, uh, WX032?
Is it what?
All right, moving right along. Alderman Clifford, anyone? Planning and zoning.
Nice one, you had a chance.
You should have asked that way before you speak a border on it, eh?
I was just, little humor, kids, that's all. We're not all stuffy guys.
Planning and, planning and zoning, anything?
I am, that's the end of my report.
No, planning and zoning is Alderman Clifford.
I have no report at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Recreation, Alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's a lot going on with Parks and Recreation this month, and I, there's things for your kids to do, there's things for the whole family to do, so I would suggest you go to the website and check out the calendar of events. You can do that in two ways, you can go to the palisht heights.org, which is the, the city's, um, website, and there'll, there'll be an icon in there for a link to go to the rec department and then check out the calendar, or you can go to palisht heights rec, R-E-C, dot org and do the same thing. And, um, and there's, there's things happening all over town, too. There's an event at the library on the seventh, and there's a concert at the, at the college, so there's plenty going on, so check out the calendars around town. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Roads and construction, Alderman Kamarski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Public Works is all ready for winter, they have the plows on, the trucks, hopefully we won't need them. That's the end of my report.
License, permits, and franchise, Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight we have three items on the agenda, um, all of which will make amendments to the city ordinances. Um, the first item on the agenda, um, is amending the ordinance regarding nuisances to expand the, uh, noise nuisance ordinance, not, to not just the commercial districts, but also to, um, residential, um, residential homes. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the city's code, section ninety-six point oh-one, see specific nuisances enumerated.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Vasso, discussion, roll call. Roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Thank you. The, the next amendment addresses international property maintenance code. Specifically, it adds in that RV and non-driveable vehicles cannot be parked in, in, excuse me, in B or B one district. Thank you. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the city's code, section one fifty-six point oh one, international property maintenance code adopted.
Move Alderman Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, there's an amendment to the city ordinances regarding special advertising signs and promotions. Every year, we have organizations here in Palis Heights that come to us and ask permission to advertise via signs all over our city about events coming up. For instance, we'll be seeing Palis Baseball Association, excuse me, PVO, advertising for registration. So this ordinance will change so that they don't have to come to us every year and that our city code enforcement officer can make that determination to post the signs. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the city's code, section ninety-three point one three one, special advertising signs and promotions.
Move Alderman Lewandowski, second by Alderman McGovern, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Motion carries.
With that, that's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Water and sewer, Alderman Violet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve a payment to RJN Group in the amount of five thousand, three hundred, twenty-nine dollars and eight cents for professional services through October of twenty nineteen.
Move Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, sir. Business and development, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the biggest events that we have around town is happening this coming weekend on Friday night, which is December sixth. And December seventh, Saturday, we're having our Kris Kringle Market in the municipal parking lot. And it starts at four forty-five on Friday night, and that's going to be our opening ceremony. So the mayor will talk and turn on the lights. And we're going to have a choir there singing. We'll have a ribbon cutting ceremony. And so every, no one will be allowed into the market until five o'clock when it officially opens. So on Friday night, the market will be open from five to nine, and then Saturday, again from one to seven. And so last year, we had over thirty-two hundred visitors, and that's besides all the vendors and the people, the volunteers helping out. I would not be surprised if we had over four thousand visitors to the market this year. And for that reason, we're encouraging people to remote park. And so you can park at CIBC Bank right at College Drive and Harlem Avenue, or at Groby Realty, or at the Commodore Building, which is seventy-two fifty College Drive. We're going to have a trolley going down Harlem, making the turn into those remote parking lots, coming right back to the market, back to parking and doing a little loop. So you won't have to wait more than ten minutes for a ride back to your car or something. But there's, the, the market is under heated tent. We have seventy-five vendors. There's five food vendors coming. Santa will be there. There's a kid's corner for crafts and writing letters to Santa. And so there's lots going on at the market. And so you can do your Christmas shopping, you can have dinner with your family that night, and just come out and take a, take a look around because it's something really to be proud of that we're putting on this event.
Yeah.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
It's a great venue. Very nice.
Yeah.
Ed Hockable, Alderman McGovern?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any old business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just one thing, it's the holiday season, so we are tentatively planning to cancel the finance meeting, which will be scheduled a week from tonight. Unless something urgent comes up, the meeting will be canceled. And I think maybe some of the other chairman might want to mention.